Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the order of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, December the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven P. M. in the Board Meeting Room at thirty-nine Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McCluster, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Here.
Ms. Eames?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Dalton?
Here. Would you all join me in a moment of silence, and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Moving to item five, Agenda Items to Be Added. Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make the motion that we add item twelve A, Virginia Department of Health Funding Request, and I'd also like to add that we add resolution under number three, which is a twenty-twenty-three, twelve oh-seven, twenty-twenty-three County Attorney Employment Agreement Amendment from the work session.
Second. All right, got a motion, got a second. Any discussion on the motion? Not hearing any, and we're ready to vote?
It passed.
Yeah, everything through. Great, thank you. Moving to item six, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we approve the agenda with the additional items that were just added under items to be added to the agenda.
All right, got a motion, second by Ms. Eames, motion by Mr. Warren. Any discussion? If none, we're ready to vote?
It passed.
Yeah, everything through. Great, thank you. Moving to item six, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we approve the agenda with the additional items that were just added under items to be added to the agenda.
All right, got a motion, second by Ms. Eames, motion by Mr. Warren. Any discussion? If none, we're ready to vote? Motion passes unanimously. Moving to item seven, the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as it has been presented in our package.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Dudley. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ingram, or Mr. Tucker? Mr. Ingram, okay.
Flipper call.
Oh, any discussion? If none, we're ready to vote?
Can I get your vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Moving to item eight, our presentations. We'll all move down to the front of the board room, please.
I'd often commented that this is one of the neatest parts of this job, and very honored to present you with this certificate of recognition, and it reads, "The Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expresses its sincere congratulations to Ms. Frances Inge Hardy of Danville, Virginia, as she celebrated her ninety-sixth birthday. Ms. Hardy was born on August twenty-first, nineteen twenty-seven, in Sycamore, Virginia, to Mason and Willie Inge. She attended school in Gretna, Virginia, in which she had to walk a mile through another farm and through the woods in the snow, cross a railroad track, and catch a bus on Route twenty-nine just to get to school. She married Chelsea Oaks Hardy on March the twenty-fourth, nineteen forty-eight, and moved to Danville, Virginia later that year to work at Dan River Meals. Later, Chelsea worked as a city fireman, and Frances worked as a school guard before working at Anderson Brothers as a seamstress and supervisor. She has two daughters, Cheryl Hall, who's with us, and Deborah Stowe, who's also with us, and she has been a member of Schoolfield Baptist Church for seventy years. It is a great pleasure and honor to send you, send your best wishes and warmest congratulations on this amazing milestone, and we hope that your day will be filled with everlasting joy and pleasure. Happy ninety-sixth birthday, on behalf of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, William V. Ingram, Tunstall District Supervisor, and Darrell W. Dalton, Chairman of the Board. Congratulations." [applause] Yes, ma'am. Okay, and while they're getting realigned, would you like to say anything? You don't have to, but...
I just thank y'all and appreciate your recognition.
And I dare you to come back in ninety-six years and let's do it again. All right? All right. Yes, we're good. Would y'all like to say anything? Y'all good?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm all right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, buddy. Appreciate that. Good to see you again.
Thank y'all.
Hey, bro. Yeah. Good to see you again. What is it for? What do we got?
Thank you, guys.
What do we have now?
Are we still got another one?
Everybody ready? All right. Good evening, everybody. We have another recognition here. We have a member here that's, will be her last night here, Ms. Nancy Eames. Would you come up, please? We're going to present this in recognition of its outstanding dedication and service to the citizens of Pennsylvania County as the Board of Supervisors at the Dan River District, represented from June twenty-three to December two thousand twenty-three, presented by the Board of Supervisors of Pennsylvania County, two thousand twenty-three. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you so much for your service. Would you like to say anything?
No.
Okay, all right. And you fine, thank you. Anyone else? You good? All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have another recognition here. We have a member here that's, will be her last night here, Ms. Nancy Eames. Would you come up, please? We're going to present this in recognition of its outstanding dedication and service to the citizens of Pennsylvania County as the Board of Supervisors at the Dan River District, represented from June twenty-three to December two thousand twenty-three, presented by the Board of Supervisors of Pennsylvania County, two thousand twenty-three. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you so much for your service. Would you like to say anything?
No.
Okay, all right. And you fine, thank you. Anyone else? You good? All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have another presentation here to recognize someone, and we're going to, we're going to honor his wishes. He didn't want to try to make a big deal and read it all out, so we're going to present our Chatham Blas Supervisor, Mr. Robert W. Warren, a resolution for his eight years of service, and also we have a plaque right here. Says January the sixteenth through December two thousand twenty-three. And also, I'll read this, he was Chairman of the Board of Supervisors in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty, and two thousand twenty-one. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your service. Thank you, thank you. Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, you sure? You gonna keep it? Ah, it's fine. Now, we have another one we want to recognize, and he's our supervisor for the Stanton River District, and he had served as our chairman this past year, vice chairman, excuse me, I'm sorry, vice chair, and he's done a good job, and we're glad that he was on here, and we're going to present this to you, Mr. Dudley, and thank you for this. Thank you. You want to say anything? Okay, you good? Okay, we're good. Do we have any more? Oh, okay. I keep forgetting about the picture. Sorry about that.
I was asked to do this one, and this is for Darrell, our chairman. It's been a privilege to serve with him. I promised him at the reorganization meeting last year that we would do our best to make his meetings run smooth, and I think we've worked fairly good together, and I appreciate him. But this is in appreciation of Darrell W. Dalton, whereas Darrell W. Dalton was elected as Chairman of the Board on January third, two thousand twenty-three, as he served as Chairman for the past year, and whereas Dalton has tirelessly given his time and effort to improve Pennsylvania County, Virginia, by serving as Chairman, and whereas Dalton has, by his dedication and leadership, faithfully, dutifully, served the Board and the county citizens. Now, therefore, be it here resolved, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the county citizens, that the Board expresses its sincerest appreciation to Dalton for his outstanding service and exemplary leadership as Chairman. Be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution be presented to Dalton, given under my hand the nineteenth day, December, two thousand twenty-three. Tim Dudley, Vice Chairman, Stuart J. Terrell Clark. Let's give Darrell a hand.
Moving to item nine, Hearing of the Citizens. Each person addressing the Board under the hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the rested agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district an all-in-one voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the Chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes, and no person shall be permitted to address the Board more than once during the hearing of the citizens. All remarks should be addressed to the Board of Supervisors as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of forty-five minutes. Any individual that is signed up to speak during such said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next Board meeting. Absent Chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Ms. McCluster, have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. John Owen?
Welcome, Mr. Owen.
Thank you. Good evening.
Evening.
My name is John Owen, Callens, Gretna District, or Gretna, Callens, depending on which part of the district you live in. But I'd like to make a few comments on this new jail that we've so been on building. Over the years, a lot of boards I've seen them waste a lot of our taxpayers' money. But this one, y'all will leave everybody else in the dust. Not widely known, but a few years ago, the county was given a fully operational, fully furnished, one hundred and two-bed correctional facility. It was surveyed off, it was deeded to the county. We made sure, the state made sure, that it was fully operational when the county took possession of it. It would suffice the needs of this county for many, many years. The only thing it needed was a new roof, six hundred and ten thousand dollars. Hadn't heard a whole lot about it, but after a short period of time, the county decided they didn't want it. Wasn't good enough. So they deeded it back to the state. Now, I don't, I'm not, I'm not a finance expert. Free, one hundred and two-bed correctional facility, thirty, forty, fifty million dollar correctional facility. Seems to me the taxpayers getting, taking to the cleaners on this one, and I don't understand it. If you didn't need it ten years ago, why do you need it now? That's, like I said, this county can waste money. I've got a couple of minutes left. Back when we built them schools, the two elementary schools, and renovated the other schools, the county hired construction managers. I think they were out of Pennsylvania. Paid them hundreds of thousands of dollars. Those people didn't know a spec book from a Playboy magazine. None, not one, of the renovated elementary schools. The HVA system does not meet specs, not a one.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Thank you. That was money totally wasted. They took that money, went back to Pennsylvania laughing. And over the years, it's cost the county hundreds of thousands of dollars in extra fuel costs because the HVA system does not function properly. The controls don't meet specs. So please don't waste any more of our money. If you didn't need a jail ten years ago, you don't need one now.
Three minutes is complete.
Thank you, and I appreciate your listening.
Thank you, Mr. Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Owen.
Anyone else signed up, Ms. McCluster?
Mike Moskowski?
It's Moskowsky.
Moskowsky, I apologize.
He goes to my church. I can say it that way.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mike Moskowski, I'm from the town of Hurt, Virginia, and I'm going to be speaking about this reassessment of properties that we received in the mail for the county of Pennsylvania County. And I'm here tonight because I want my voice and opinion heard, and the voices of a number of homeowners that I've talked to that are not here, who agree with my view, and there are probably many more that agree with my view. Some feel, I don't feel this, but some have told me it's a waste of time to even come here and talk, that the Board doesn't really listen. They're going to do what they want to do, when they want to do it, and they are appalled, and so am I, of this notification of a proposed increase in the value of our homes, which is at most outrageous and egregious to the general public. Most know that when homes are reassessed and inflated, their taxes go up, and so does the homeowner's insurances. Many proposed reassessments are high, some forty-six to forty-nine percent increase, and this is pretty hawkish, as far as I'm concerned, without concern for the people. And like myself, I'm seventy-three years old, others who are single, widowed, or widowers, single parents with kids, who see this as, I believe, as a very outrageous tax grab and revenue builder for an overinflated agenda and budget. I know what the law says about reassessments. I'm very familiar with that, coming from New York State, where it's a tax-and-spend state. Over five hundred thousand people left the state of New York last year, two hundred eighty thousand left Virginia last year, and many more will be leaving our state, and it's basically because taxation is considered economic development. Tax, tax, and tax, a rise of socialism. I did not retire here in central Virginia to live in another sister state of New York, but it seems like much of what's going on in the state legislature and in local governments has the bent of socialism, that they run roughshod over the people, but yet call it a democracy. Many of your homeowners and small businesses and farmers are in their sixties to eighty-years-old bracket and living on meager social security, and their disappearing savings. Reassessing homes and properties increases to the amount of thirty to forty-nine percent, I believe is excessive and a presumptive uncaring overreach of county government, whatever state it might be. Utilities are up, water...
this is pretty hawkish as far as I'm concerned, without concern for the people. And like myself, I'm seventy-three years old, others who are single, widowed or widors, single parents with kids, who see this as, I believe, as a very outrageous tax grab and revenue builder for an overinflated agenda and budget. I know what the law says about reassessments, I'm very familiar with that, coming from New York State where it's a tax and spend state. Over five hundred thousand people left the state of New York last year, two hundred eighty thousand left Virginia last year, and many more will be leaving our state, and it's basically because taxation is considered economic development. Tax, tax, and tax, a rise of socialism. I did not retire here in central Virginia to live in another sister state of New York, but it seems like much of what's going on in the state legislature and in local governments has the bent of socialism, that they run roughshod over the people but yet call it a democracy. Many of your homeowners and small businesses and farmers are in their sixties to eighty years old bracket and living on meager social security and their disappearing savings. Reassessing homes and properties increases to the amount of thirty to forty-nine percent, I believe is excessive and a presumptive uncaring overreach of county government, whatever state it might be. Utilities are up, water bills are up.
Thirty seconds remaining.
And food and all the other things are up. I just want to go on record that I'm strongly opposing this proposal for reassessment of our properties at such excessive rates. Thank you, sir. I appreciate the time to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mike.
Welcome, sir. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Board Chairman. It's tough on an old, it's tough on an old watch builder to be within the guidelines of three minutes, but Joe Davis, two thousand nineteen Board Chairman of Pennsylvania County. Thank you, Pennsylvania County, for allowing me this last gesture of clearing my desk. First, it was a pleasure to serve the entire citizenry of this county, but alas, pleasure as well as life, as you know, does not last forever as a rule. I once was informed of a statement of a dear person who has their own publication with the quote, "Let's make Pennsylvania County number one," unquote. Apparently she must have swallowed a narrative. A narrative is a spun story without facts, truth, and results. You all know, for you read it every day, never really searching out the truth, because the truth requires study and decision from the uninformed. Many will not study for that, it's because study is very, very hard, and pleasures are held to a minimum. That is, we like the easy life. We don't have to dig in and really study the material, we have to follow the narrative and the spinning thereof. It is very easy to sit in the stands of any game, and we all know this, and ridicule and cuss the players, paying with their sweat, injury, and even blood to win for their team and sponsors. The sponsors being, we be, you are sponsors. Which brings me to the rest of the story, as Paul Harvey would say. Pennsylvania County citizens won the Super Bowl five years in a row until the debacle on January the first, twenty twenty-one, a true day that will live on in infamy. The successes are as follows, and by the way, we won the Super Bowl five years in a row, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bob Warren. I, I got one, I got one ring. You got your ring, you lost yours, and Vaden, you sold yours, but we didn't get five like the Pittsburgh Steelers did. So some of the things are successes as follows, and they're by no means any way top the iceberg. The animal facility that I regret pushing forward due to financing that could be done without attacking the general fund balance to the tune of two percent on the dollar finance.
Thirty seconds remaining.
But being a, being a counter that we have, Mr. Bob Warren, that without him, your finances even today wouldn't be in line for a new budget. You will be calling him. Credit today is keen. Very slight raising of property tax at my tenure, no increase to the county coffers in debtness, did I forget the internet you didn't bring. Four challenges still facing then and now are fire and rescue services.
Three minutes is complete.
School board referendum yet to be realized, landfill operations, and I'm going to finish this. Even now, this county faces a new sale to the tune of about seven mil to accommodate just for household refuse. You hear me? Money is going up. Affording school debt payments and economic project funding. Our board has been given more funding, has given to, more funding to the firing EMS personnel from then, the then county administrator's office than any administration than any to date. Our ribbon schools funding.
Mr. Davis, you need to wind it down, sir.
Our ribbon, I'm going to finish this.
We need you to wind it down.
You're going to give me respect as a former chairman, please, sir, I do beg you, just, just the very, I don't have nothing but four letters, four sentences to go there by, and you and I can talk later. Four challenges still facing us, fire and rescue services, school bond referendum yet to be realized, landfill operations, as I said, seven million we're going to be facing soon to accommodate the household refuse. You boys are not telling these people this? Affording school debt payments that we're still in, and not funding an economic project. I salute the chairman, Bob Warren, and his vice chairman, Ron Scares. I salute the chairman, one reason. Chairman Bob Warren has been the chairman of this county since he's been on the board. You just act and act. Thank you for your dedication and your service to this county, unbeknownst to people that will never realize what they're going to lose when you're gone, sir. And the reason is, I don't care about you, your money, your friends, I don't care about none of that. It's because I watched you and I saw a business mind that's up there with the Donald Trump regions, that these others have no, they have no intellect to delve, and you know I know this. I salute you, and I salute Scares for their insight and dedication to duty. Chairman Warren, I go on record, there will never be another like you in this county. Soldier Scares, if I had the ability, I would put upon thy shoulders, sir, the Medal of Honor, but I don't have it. Joe Biden certainly won't give me that to present to you. Soldier Scares, who was a covert operator on foreign shore where the boots were in the sands, and I don't need to go into that, I'm finishing right here, I promise you, because you can't stand anymore. On foreign shore for this country, covert operations, private contractor, they don't know what you deal with up there. In other words, called special forces, elite. Mr. Air Force, sir, there will be no other that demanded integrity and exposure from the deceiver and the destroyer that sits among us tonight. So gentlemen, I say to you two, you two, you go. Thank God. But there's a saying, don't cry before it is over. Don't cry before it's over. Smile because it happened. As Paul Harvey said, now that is the rest of the story.
Mr. Davis, you have to stop, sir.
Thank you, though, Chairman.
Thank you.
Marion Gaines.
How are you doing tonight?
I'm doing well, thank you, sir. How's everyone?
Make, make sure you have your mic down where they can hear you good. Thank you.
How's that?
That's good. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Marion Gaines from the Dan River District. I am here in pursuit of restitution for my great-grandmother, Mary Jane Walters', estate, which has been in our family since nineteen oh seven. Mr. Howard Terry was selected as our family's advocate since twenty-ten up to present. Upon receiving a notification of delinquent taxes for the years twenty-twelve, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, Mr. Terry, who alone had the resources and willingness, paid the amount of two thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty-two cents in full on September twenty-second, twenty fifteen. Unfortunately, multiple tax collector got involved in the collection of our taxes. Mr. Terry received another tax bill from Sands Anderson on March twenty-fifth, twenty-sixteen, stating that we owed five thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and nineteen cents, and this amount must be paid within thirty days or proceedings would be initiated to have the property sold. So acting on the advice of a representative of Sands Anderson, Mr. Terry submitted a letter to Judge Monroe stating that he would not contest the property sale with the understanding that the heirs would be eligible to receive the excess proceeds after all the taxes and fees were paid. Later, we discovered that the Pennsylvania County Tax Code allows a two-year grace period before taxes owed are classified as being delinquent enough to be referred to a tax collection company. So we felt that we had been treated unfairly. In retrospect, considering that the delinquent taxes were paid in full by Mr. Terry on September the twenty-second of twenty fifteen, we should not have received notification requiring payment of five thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars and nineteen cents in order to keep us from losing our property. Impropieties such as these have been going on from the beginning. Yes, I believe the system failed us. I am seeking to fully honor my great-grandmother's legacy of love. I can't let it go. Therefore, let it be noted that I am not just some old black lady standing here before you right now, right here, looking for a handout. I am a proud descendant of an awesome black woman who initiated an amazing plan that set up a righteous path in order to build up as much subsequent generational wealth and prosperity as possible for her family. I am here requesting that the proceeds that are being held.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Under our, under your discretionary control be released to my family and me. We are the rightful beneficiaries. My request is strongly backed up by a letter sent to the board of supervisors from the Honorable Senator of the State of Virginia, William Stanley, who said that he believes that the board of supervisors should find a way to release these funds to my family and me because it is the right thing to do, in his humble opinion. I thank you for your time for giving me this opportunity to be heard.
Three minutes is complete.
On the platform of this public. God bless you, everyone.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines.
Jane Kendrick.
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
Jane Kendrick, Tunstall District. Good evening. This has been a difficult, tumultuous year in the lives of many county residents. However, as in any difficulty, there is always a shining light. This year, county residents have been blessed to have two such lights. Tonight, on behalf of Josh Austin, Natalie Bennett, and the Acton Community Group, I would like to publicly recognize and thank two members of the board of supervisors who listened to and supported the citizens in their quest for representation and informing county residents. Mr. Ron Scares, an Air Force veteran of twenty-two years with combat experience, has served the Westover District residents faithfully for eight years. Mr. Scares looked out for the welfare of the Westover District as well as seeing the big picture when it came to rezoning these county changes that would and are impacting the entire county. Mr. Scares, I am not supposed to address a member of the board, but I am. Mr. Scares, thank you. Mrs. Nancy Eames, another shining light and a true public servant. Not only did Mrs. Eames agree to serve on the board until an election could be held, Mrs. Eames did so with grace and tenacity. Time and again, Mrs. Eames said, and I quote, "I will always listen to the people. I will do what the people want done." This is the pinnacle of true representative government, doing what the people want, not what you want. I do not know many people who would accept a tenure on the board and withstand a brutal, slanderous campaign while maintaining the level of Christian composure that Mrs. Eames has shown. Mrs. Eames, I will address you as well and say simply, thank you.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Thank you for listening, for your support in our efforts, and for your insight into the significant consequences of this board's decisions. On behalf of the Acton Community Group, thank you, Mr. Scares, and thank you, Mrs. Eames, for your public service to our county.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else sign up?
Mike Kendrick.
Welcome, Mr. Kendrick.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. It's kind of hard to come up last with the people that came before you. I think they pretty much said it all, but Mr. Scares, I want to thank you for everything you've done for us. Appreciate you, appreciate your integrity, your honesty. You're going to be missed. And Miss Eames, the same with you. Appreciate you. Didn't know you from Adam before met you on the board, and thank you for everything you've done for us, for your integrity, and like Jane said, your shining light. We thank you. Mr. Warren, you're going to be missed, too. Hope you have a good retirement and thank you for your service on the board. There was a line in a movie that I've always liked, guys, fellow sisters and main character, we're going to go up there and set things straight. So I had a lot of things I was going to say tonight, but I'm, I'm going to hold back. But there is one thing I want to address. Last meeting, there was a statement made about people that like to stir the pot, if we could just get rid of them, everything would be okay. Well, I want to say in front of everybody, if it wasn't for the pot stirs, where would our school boards be now? You know, where they, people have finally woke up, you know, then they're stirring the pot, you know, this woke agenda is trying to take over our country. Where would our school boards be without the pot stirs? Where would our county government be without the pot stirs? Where would our federal government be, state government? You know, if we just sat back and nobody said anything, it's already a mess. It's already a mess in Washington, it's a mess in Richmond with a lot of things. Thank goodness some things are starting to get back in order, our school boards, thank goodness some people have woke up, thank goodness the pot stirs woke up some people, okay? So don't ever get rid of the pot stirs, because they're what keeps everybody honest, okay? They're what brings up stuff that nobody wants to hear. This state, stand right here, it deserves a lot of pot stirs. Like I say, to keep everybody honest, keep everybody on their toes, and not to let a woke agenda or something like that run away with everything. And one other thing I want to say, I never heard of a progressive conservative, a progressive conservative to this last election. And as far as I know, the two don't mix. It's like oil and water. Don't mix. Thank you for your time, and y'all will be missed.
Thank you, sir.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving to item ten, rezoning public hearings. Pursuit to Article Five, Division Six of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, the board of supervisors have been empowered to hear, decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance and accomplishment, accomplishing this important task, the board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The board must ensure that all of its decisions or regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Case CP dash twenty-three dash zero zero one, Ms. Ragsdale.
The case before you relates to amending the future land use map in our comprehensive plan. This amendment would affect twenty-one parcels totaling two hundred and twenty-four point five three acres located off of State Road three sixty and US Highway twenty-nine Danville Expressway in the county. Currently, these parcels are designated as industrial in the future land use comprehensive plan, or the comprehensive plan, future land use map. However, after conversation. However, after conversations with our Economic Development Director, he feels that this area will never be suitable for industrial use based on certain factors, and it would be more suitable for commercial use. So, it is recommended that these parcels be amended from industrial, an industrial designation, to a mixed commercial-industrial designation on the future land use map for the comprehensive This did go before Planning Commission in November. Planning Commission recommended by a seven-to-zero vote that this amendment be passed. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. At 7:46, open the public hearing in case- Is anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. At 7:46, I close the public hearing. The pleasure is yours, Ms. Eames.
I make a motion for the Board to accept the case CP-23-001, amended the comprehensive plan, future land use map from industrial to mixed commercial-industrial for this plot, 21 parcels, 24.53 acres located on or off 360 Old Richmond Road and US 29 Danville Expressway.
Got a motion?
I'll second her motion, Mr. Dalton.
Second by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on a motion? If not, we're ready to vote. Motion carries unanimous. Moving to number two, case R-23-028, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-028, John and Tina Stein have petitioned to rezone one parcel totaling 11.08 acres located off of State Road 41 Franklin Turnpike in the Tunstall Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow the property to be subdivided. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The Planning Commission recommended by a seven-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the staff summaries and closes the board packet, Mr. Chairman John Stein is here to represent the petition.
Thank you. All right, at 7:48, open the public hearing in case R-23-028. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. At 7:48, I'll close the public hearing in case R-23-028. Does anyone else need to speak on this case, Ms. Ragsdale? Nobody else? Okay. All right, the pleasure is yours, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In case R-23-028, I make a motion approving the rezoning of 11.8 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow the property to be subdivided.
Second. Motion by Mr. Ingram, second by Mr. Warren. Any discussion? If none, we're ready to vote. All right, motion carries. Moving to case R-23-29, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-029, Jared and Sarah Moser have petitioned to rezone three parcels located on State Road 863 Laniers Road in the Chadon-Blairs Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for the placement of an accessory structure and the property to be used for agricultural purposes. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary, I mean, Planning Commission recommended by a seven-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summaries and closes the board packet, Mr. Chairman Jared Moser is here to represent the petition.
Thank you. At 7:50, open the case in R-23-029. Is anyone signed up to speak, Ms. McCloskey?
No, sir.
All right. All right, at 7:50, I'll close the case in R-23-029. And the pleasure is Mr. Warren's.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In case R-23-028, I make a motion approving the rezoning of three parcels totaling 52.13 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for the placement of an accessory structure and agricultural uses.
I'll second that, Mr. Warren, but I think you said 028, and I believe it was 029. Is that correct?
It is 029.
Yes, sir. Yes, okay.
Got a motion by Mr. Warren, second by Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? If none, we're ready to vote.
On the packet is 28. Is it 29?
It's 29.
Yeah, I've got 23-029. Is that correct, Ms. Ragsdale?
Let's get the right one.
Yeah, make sure we got the right case number.
I have 28 in the agenda.
Yeah, I've got 029.
It's 29. 29's right? Okay. Well, I'm in my motion to be 29, 029.
All right.
I'll second the amendment.
Second by Mr. Dudley. Okay. Ready to vote, no discussion. All right. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
Yes, sir.
All right, in case R-23-031, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-031, Sharon Smith has petitioned to rezone 1.512 acres located on US Highway 58 Martinsville Highway in the Tunstall Election District from Residential Multifamily District to RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to allow for the placement of a double-wide mobile home. Once the property is rezoned to RC1, all uses listed under Section 35-267 are permitted. The Planning Commission recommended by a seven-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summaries and closes the board packet, Mr. Chairman Sharon Smith is here to represent the petition.
Thank you. At 7:52, open the public hearing in case R-23-031. Is anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. Sir, do you have anything to add to this case? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, at 7:53, I'll close the public hearing in case R-23-031. The pleasure is yours, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, sir. In case R-23-031, I make the motion approving the rezoning of 1.512 acres from RMF Residential Multifamily District to RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to allow for the placement of a double-wide manufactured home.
Motion by Mr. Ingram.
Second.
Second by Ms. Eames. Any discussion on a motion? If none, we're ready to vote. Motion carries. In case R-23-035, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-035, River City Enterprises has petitioned to rezone 10.224 acres located on State Road 360 Old Richmond Road in the Dane River Election District from M2 Industrial District Heavy Industry to B2 Business District General to allow for the sales, service, and repair farm equipment. Once the property is rezoned to B2, all uses listed under Section 35-365 are permitted. The Planning Commission recommended by a seven-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summaries and closes the board packet, Mr. Chairman, a representative from River City Enterprises is here to represent the petition.
Thank you. At 7:54, open up the public hearing in case R-23-035. Is anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
At 7:55, I'll close the public hearing in case R-23-035. Ms. Eames, the pleasure is yours.
I make a motion to accept the case R23-035, property 10.224 acres located 360 Old Richmond Road by River City Enterprises LLC, changing from M2 Industrial District Heavy Industry to B2 Business District General. They're going to use the property for sales, service, and repair for farm equipment, relocation of Kubota dealership and beverage tractor to the site. I make a motion to accept that.
Motion by Ms. Eames.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tucker. Any discussion? If none, we're ready to vote. All right. Motion carries unanimous. Moving to other public hearings. Each person addressing the board under the public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district, and all his or her place of residence for non-county citizens in all the tone of voice for the record. Nonetheless, further time as granted by the chairman shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to 10 minutes. Speakers shall include their remarks at that time unless the consent of the board is affirming and giving the extension, extending the speaker's allotted time. Absent chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Public hearing, Pennsylvania County Code Amendments in Chapter 18 subdivision. Ms. Ragsdale.
In August of this year, you all adopted amendments to the RPD district regulations in the zoning ordinance, which is Chapter 35 of the Pennsylvania County Code. Those amendments are now in direct opposition to Chapter 18, which is our subdivision ordinance. So, staff has presented a red-line version of the subdivision ordinance that's included in your packet that would add language allowing the changes that were made to the RPD to move forward and projects to move forward that were in compliance with those changes made, and the subdivision ordinance would not stop them and those subdivision plats from being recorded. So, there is a red-line version in front of you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. At 7:57, I'll open the public hearing for the County Code Amendments. Do we have anyone signed up, Ms. McCloskey?
Jane Kendrick?
Welcome, Ms. Kendrick.
Mr. Dalton, you knew I was going to speak. Jane Kendrick, Tunstall District. I spoke at the last meeting when this was brought up, and I'd said it then, and I'll say it again. Why are we changing our codes to suit developers? Now, tonight, Directly Southside was not brought up, but it was last meeting, and we know that's who we're doing this dance for. We were told, this summer, when we fought against the RPD code changes, we were told that those changes were necessary so townhouses could be sold, not just rented. And now, we have to have additional changes to our subdivision code, again, to accommodate developers. So, we're just selling out our county, little by little. And all summer long, in discussions either individually with you or here at meetings, we kept repeatedly being told, "No, no, no." We were even called fear mongers. I'm not a fear monger. I'm a realist. I look at the details, and I say, "This doesn't make sense. Why are we changing codes to suit outside developers?" So, now, here we come. We not just changed our RPD code. That wasn't enough. Then, we had to rezone agriculture to RPD. Now, we have to change our subdivision codes. All at the bid of someone who wants to come here and make money, and that's the bottom line. We're not fooling ourselves that we're doing this for, you know, jobs to come in here. We're not fooling ourselves that we're doing this because there's people living on the streets. We heard all that. It's not true. But my question is probably twofold, and I know Emily's not here to where we could just talk and answer it, but my question is this. Why is the language, why, first off, if the RPD was not done so hastily, maybe you wouldn't have this problem? Maybe if the correct amount of time and care was taken, instead of throwing it together, trying to hurry it and get something passed back in May, June, July, and August, maybe we wouldn't have this problem. But again, the code has too much language that says, "Unless the Board of Supervisors wants to allow for smaller lots, less setback, et cetera." And I think we are on dangerous ground when we do that. And I'll say it again.
Thirty seconds remaining.
You're looking at yourselves, saying, "Well, yeah, but we're the board, and we think we've got this. What about future boards?" And when is enough enough? When is enough enough? And I guess the bottom line, too, is, are we listening to what the citizens are saying? So, I think there needs to be a little bit more careful consideration and a full understanding before this-
Three minutes is complete.
...subdivision, before these changes are allowed. From where I'm standing and from reading these documents, and yes, I am one of those weird citizens that sit here and read these now because obviously a lot of people are not, but unless we have a full understanding of it, to where each of you can explain it to someone else or to your constituents back at home, then it shouldn't be passed. And what is the hurry? What is the hurry? You know, we hurried into the RPD code changes. Had to be done. Had to be done. Do we have the road studies? Do we have the environmental studies? No. We have nothing, except for some people who are happy and a lot of people who aren't. I thank you all for your time. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else signed, Ms. McCloskey?
Yes, Michael Kendrick.
Mr. Kendrick?
Good evening again, Mike Kendrick, Tunstall District. My wife pretty much has said it all again, but I want to reiterate one thing. When the subdivision in Acton was passed, it was stated then that nothing else would be done with that subdivision until a traffic study was done, okay? Not this Tuesday, but Tuesday before last, at the Danville Council Meeting, they had a very similar thing. The guy that tried to put the park in your district, Kuba, I think his name is, he changed his mind. He wants to build houses now instead of putting RV park in. So, right now, you can put two houses per acre, novel idea, in Danville. He wants to put three houses per acre. So, they had some citizens get up, spoke concerns about the traffic and all this. So, what did the council do in Danville? They tabled it until a traffic study was going to be done. Now, in August, when this was passed, and again, we were led to believe that nothing else would be done until the traffic study was done. And all of a sudden, within a month, we issued special use permits that were voted on and passed because they had to have it to get a grocery store, okay? So, again, we're trying to change something again, and still, no traffic study. Just want to make that point, that we were misled a little bit. You know, this thing seems to be going full steam ahead, and no traffic study yet. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else signed up, Ms. McCloskey?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. At 8:04, I'll close the public hearing. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion approving the attached revisions to PCC Chapter 18 as presented.
Motion by Mr. Ingram. Second.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Tucker. Any discussion on a motion?
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
More for the public. Emily?
Emily? Mr. Dalton?
I'm sorry.
Can you tell us?
Oh, can you come to your mic, Mr. Warren?
Sure, I'm sorry.
No, they couldn't hear you.
Can you tell us what actually can be constructed on this property? Can you tell us what actually can be constructed on this property if they don't get a satisfactory traffic study?
Nothing.
Thank you. That was all I had.
I got one question. Do we have an ETA on when that traffic study may get done?
The last update I got from Dewberry was that they had gotten their traffic counts. So they were doing their modeling for existing conditions, and then they will move into modeling for futuristic use of the property, but I'm not sure exactly when they expect that to be complete. But the process is moving along.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions for Ms. Ragsdale?
Emily, just to make it perfectly clear that nothing is being held back or anyone is being misled. In the process, before even dirt can be moved, the traffic impact analysis has to be done and approved, as well as all the necessary permits, correct?
That is correct.
So until that's done, nothing's gonna happen.
That's correct. We have to issue a land disturbance permit.
Yes, ma'am.
So they have to have approved stormwater plans through DQ. They have to have an approved erosion sediment control plan through my office, and that involves VDOT signing off on any entrances, which VDOT will not do until this traffic study has been approved.
And once that traffic impact analysis is done, it's suspected that this overall project could be modified in some capacity or another, correct?
It could be, yes.
So all these far-fetched numbers that we're hearing about, everything from four to six thousand new people and all this traffic, once this impact analysis is done and all the permits are issued, until that's done and the builders start building, you don't really know how many people or vehicles you will have. It's all just a projection, correct?
VDOT has calculations that they use based on the use that's being proposed and how many vehicle trips per day that generates, and that's usually the highest number. So they plan for the highest number of vehicles in and out per day. So the study, once the study determines that number, it will tell them what improvements need to be done to not only 58, but the surrounding secondary roads to accommodate that level of traffic volume. And so at that point, the developers would determine what is financially feasible for them to do, and then adjust their proposal accordingly. So until that traffic study is done, no, we don't really know, for sure.
Thank you. All right, any more questions? Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale.
Thank you, Emily. Appreciate it.
All right, any more discussion? If not?
No, sir.
We're ready to vote. All right, motion carries five, yes, two, no. Moving to public hearing, PCC 6-6-3 revision of the Keeling Volunteer Fire Department tax exempt application. Ms. McCluster, do you have something on that?
Sure. So the Keeling Fire Department has submitted an application for a tax exemption, and this is for a parcel of their land that they use for parking and storage. If you all approve this tonight, the county's annual loss of tax revenue would be $133.92.
All right, thank you. At 8:09, I opened the public hearing. Has anyone signed up for this?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. 8:09, I closed the public hearing. All right, Ms. Eames, this is in your district. Your pleasure.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to accept this, to give them tax exemption, 501(c)(3) status.
All right, motion by Ms. Eames.
I'll second the motion.
All right, second by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion? Not hearing any? We're ready to vote. All right, motion carries seven. Moving to item 11, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business, gentlemen? Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
All right. Moving, thank you, sir, moving to item 12, new business, 12A. Head to VDH. Mr. Warren?
Oh, yeah, Congress for Finance Committee. I think Mr. Tucker actually has the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Tucker, you got it. I'm sorry.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll offer a motion for the county to loan its local Virginia Department of Health a vehicle until the end of the current fiscal year and get the county's legislative committee and/or county staff to work with state to attempt to secure additional funding for appropriate VDH future operations. Additionally, county staff will reach out to its Department of Social Services to determine if they have an available vehicle to loan VDH. That's my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. I'll take a second. Second. Second by Mr. Warren. Any discussion on emotion? No, we're ready to vote. All right, motion carries seven. Moving to item 13, matters from the work session, if there's any. Do we have any matters from work session?
We do.
We have one.
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
Does Chairman like to add something?
Make a motion.
I make a motion that it came from work session. I've already added it when we did the agenda.
Okay, I've got the resul, you quit.
I'd like to make a motion that we renew our county attorney's contract as is currently in place with all the benefits of, and increase the salary by an additional 2% to what he's currently eligible for under his current contract.
Okay, that's fine.
I got a motion by Mr. Warren.
Second.
Second by Ms. Eames. Any discussion on emotion? If none, we're ready to vote. Motion carries seven, unanimous. Moving to item 14, our board members' reports. Start with Mr. Tucker again. Would you like to start, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to thank Chairman Dalton, Vice Chairman Dudley, for a very good year. I appreciate Mr. Warren and Mr. Scares and their service to the county, along with Ms. Eames. I'm excited about what the future holds for this county. We have oncoming supervisors in January. I look forward to working with them in collaboration to move the county forward. Thanks to all the citizens for all of their input and staying tuned in and dialed into everything that the county is doing. So again, I say thank you and also Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I do want to echo, you guys did a great job this year, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I did want to honor and make known that my ID appointee, John Daniel, just celebrated 20 years of his construction business, and that's a lot to be proud of. You know, this has been a tough year. We've lost a lot of good people. Here just recently, Gary Thomas, who worked for the sheriff's office, died unexpectedly in his sleep, but you know, that's a good way to go. But we've lost several others, including Scott Eames. And it's a tough time of year when you gather around a Christmas tree and at the dinner table, and you see those empty seats. It's mighty tough. But I do want to reflect on the election. Welcome Ken and Eddie and Mary to the board. I do, again, want to thank our fire and rescue people. What would we do without you guys? And girls, I'm sorry. You're Godsend, and I am one citizen that's ever so grateful for that. November 26th, 57 years ago, a little company called Goodyear Tie and Rubber Company built a plant on a piece of land that was a tobacco farm. And once again, where would we be if Goodyear Tie and Rubber Company had not come to this district or this area? And then just a couple of weeks ago, we welcomed Tyson Foods to the county. Once again, they built on a tobacco farm. So I'm, again, very grateful for these corporations and very optimistic about the mega park at Berry Hill. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. I missed the last meeting. I participated by Internet. I was somewhere in the middle of the Atlantic. But Debbie and I celebrated 38 years of marriage, so I gotta brag on that. They changed the meeting dates. That's why I wasn't here in person. But I just want to close by speaking about Christmas, because when we think about Christmas, we talk about love, we talk about peace, and we talk about forgiveness. And that's the true message in it all. We had a Savior that came to this earth to die for some people that's very unworthy, and I happen to be one of them. But amidst of that, there's a beautiful message of forgiveness and giving us the option to live a righteous life, that we can put things behind us and move forward. And so I wish you all a very Merry Christmas, and it's a beautiful time of year, and we all should practice love, peace, and forgiveness. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Mr. Scares?
Yeah, I was probably gonna plan on leaving this and sailing off to the sunset, but I've got so many friends out in the audience today, I think I should impart some wisdom over the eight years that I've been on this board, things that we learned the hard way, and I want to impart some of those on, at least Ken, since he's here, and the new board members. Hopefully, they'll go back and watch this. For me, it's been a privilege to serve this county and the citizens, and I can guarantee that every decision I've tried to make with the best information that we were provided, I've tried to make sure it was a vote of integrity and to do the right thing for the county. The best thing we've got are the county employees. I want to thank them all for everything they've done to make our life easier. And I want to go back eight years ago when we got on this board. They were underpaid, benefits were low, and over the last eight years, we've done everything we can to keep that going. So I hope the new board will keep that in mind and make sure these guys get what they deserve. The other thing is protect them. We've got one crazy board member that likes doing investigations of county employees, as well as doing frivolous criminal investigations, like when he did with the Commonwealth Attorney of Lynchburg, without telling anything, anyone, about it or the results of that investigation. So please try to protect our employees. One other thing is, there was a comment asked about bankruptcy. That question probably should have been asked of our finance director, Bob and I, or even Darrell. I think they probably remember the days when every expenditure was approved by the county administrator, and I think it was down to $500 because we had made some mistakes and was led to take money out of the unassigned fund, I think to a tune of $12 million, in between 2016 and 2017. We finally had built that back up. This report shows that we put about 16 million back into the unassigned fund, and we're still about 1% below where we need to be. So I beg you not to do any balancing of the budget by taking money out of the unassigned fund. The weird trick with this is this audit's done June 30th, and it's right after the first payment goes in for the tax property payments. So it makes it look like we've got a ton of money, but with everything we're facing, the jail and the courthouse, you really got to be careful about taking money out of that unassigned fund. So I hope you'll protect that fund. One other thing, I need to talk about the Fire and Rescue Commission. Last year, it was revamped, and it changed it into a political action committee. If you watched any of the meetings leading up to the election, it was turned into a political crap show. So my suggestion is either, one, turn it back into the entity it was when it was put together after we looked at the 2015 Fire and Rescue Study, and that was the recommendation, turn it back into an oversight entity or get rid of it. By getting rid of it, which is probably the best suggestion, it'll give the Public Safety Director direct input from the fire and rescue agencies themselves by working with the association, and it'll also give the smaller departments a louder voice. Hopefully, that will take all the politics out of that entity. And finally, I want to talk about a legacy. I guess someone talked about making a legacy in this position. Only thing I've ever tried to do is make sound decisions with integrity and truthfulness to the people of this county. The only legacy that I can go back and say that I really loved was the fact that we made a decision to get rid of a local DSS director a few years back. And by doing that, we got a new director, and the results of that was a family, a foster family, was able to get a little girl back that they had finally adopted. That wouldn't have happened under the former director. She was adopted into a Christian-loving family, and for me, that's the best legacy I could ever have, knowing that that little girl's gonna grow up with the love she deserves. So as far as all the economic development, that stuff's good, but to me, that never mattered to me in this position. So all I can say is good luck with what you guys do next year. You're gonna have a tough road to hold with everything this county's getting ready to get hit with financially, so I hope you guys can go maneuver through that minutia and keep the county going in a good direction. Other than that, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Scares. Ms. Eames? Any comments?
Yes, I want to thank the board for working so diligently with me the six months and the staff of the county, every person in the county administration. They are very dedicated employees, and the citizens need to thank them every chance that they get. And our county administrator and county attorney, anytime I've reached out, both of these men have responded, and we've communicated, and I appreciate that. And I look forward to seeing the great things that the new board is going to bring forward, and I'm willing to support, even though I'll be back on the citizen's side, I'm willing to help any way that I can. And of course, I'll still be driving a school bus, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eames. Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir, Mr. Dalton. Thank you. Thank you, board, everybody that's serving right now. Really, a good year is not necessarily defined as an easy year, and sometimes we have difficulties and hurdles, but we have worked hard this year, and I want to just thank the board. I want to, you know, as we go into the Christmas season, you know, it's been discussed, there's a lot of folks that, you know, you see obituaries all the time, and a lot of folks are leaving this old world, and there's a lot of families that's hurting this time of year. There's a lot of lonely folks, and you never know by reaching out to somebody that could use a little help or maybe is down and out and depressed, that you may could save a life. But just consider those folks that are not as fortunate as we are, and just remember that God sent His Son in the form of man to be born so that he could die just for "sorry old me," and I'm thankful that he did it.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Mr. Warren?
Yes, Mr. Chairman told me as long as I kept it under 45 minutes tonight, that was okay with him. I was asked a couple of weeks ago to talk about my accomplishments for the last eight I thought a lot about that. And I want to go on full record tonight as saying, I had no accomplishments. I did have a pleasure of being a part of a board, and it was a variety of members over the eight years. But it was always because we could come together and decide to make a decision that we discussed and believed was in the best interest of the county. So I want to make it very clear, Bob Warren has no accomplishments. I have some, I was part of a team that had some accomplishments, and that's a wonderful thing, and I really enjoyed that. And I will tell you that I appreciate every person that I ever served with for their commitment. And I will tell you that I appreciate every person that I ever served with for their commitment to serve, because it's not an easy job. And unfortunately, a lot of times it spills over into being, uh, getting involved with family and everything else, and that should never happen. My family didn't run for this seat, nor did anybody else's family run for it. Maybe, maybe Ken had a little bit of assistance with Brenda, but I just think we should always be mindful of that, both as citizens and as board members and all, to stay away from the families. They didn't sign up for it. I think we should all, as board members, be held accountable and, and all of that. But before you come as citizens and wanna criticize or judge someone's decision, take the opportunity to call them. You know, I, I know a couple of folks that really attacked me, but they never one time called me. I gave out my personal cell number on multiple occasions. So I would just challenge every citizen, before you get upset, reach out and talk to your supervisor, and find out really what's going on. Because a lot of times, if you'd taken time to talk to them and had that one-on-one conversation, you might have gotten a lot better results than coming in and just bitten for three So I'm going on a thank you tour for a few minutes, and then I'm gonna be done. And I'm, I hope I don't leave any names out, but if I do, I'm gonna apologize to you, and if you call and say you left me out, I'll take you to lunch and apologize. But I wanna thank all the citizens of Pennsylvania County. It has been a pleasure to serve you for eight years, and it was a pleasure to serve as your chairman for four of those years. We had a really good team when I entered my first term, and I don't wanna leave without mentioning those people. Mr. Elton Blackstock, Mr. Tim Barber, Jerry Hageman, Joe Davis, Ron Scares, Jesse Barksdale, and then two years later, Ben Farmer and Dr. Charles Mittler. I can't tell you with the conditions that the county was in when we took office, from a financial perspective and from our employees, and how a lot of times budgets was balanced on their backs. But these gentlemen that I just mentioned during that first four years, I can tell you, we didn't always agree, but I never think there was a time, whether closed session, open session, or whatever, that I didn't feel like every one of those men were interested in what was best for Pennsylvania County. Not, I can't even remember during those first four years, anybody talking about my district. You know, you would hear somebody say, well, you know, my district, we gotta do this, I'm gotta do that, but it wasn't like leaving others out. Let's do this for my district, 'cause I think this'll help the entire county. And that's why we were able to have, as a team, some of the wins we had during those first years. So if there's one thing I could leave for the new incoming, incoming board, was that you have that kind of harmony and that kind of relationship, where everyone comes in focusing on what's best for Pennsylvania County. Because I can promise you, if it's good for Mr. Dudley's district or Mr. Scares's district, and it happens, it's gonna be good for all of us. So I would hope you would keep that focus in mind. I wanna thank the citizens of the Chatham Blair's district, who showed the confidence in me for two consecutive terms. And I will say, I think I'm leaving you in good hands. I'm happy that my friend, Ken Bowman, will be taking that position. I was pleased that there were really good qualified people that chose to step up and run for that district. So I, I think, you know, we're in good hands, and I think we could do really good things. I see that Mr. Fox is here tonight. I hope you will continue to be active and be involved. I know you will, and there's a lot of places to serve besides just sitting up here in the hot seat. Sometimes those things are better. Then I wanna thank staff. Man, I can't say enough about staff. I wanna thank Miss, Mr. Chris Adcock. He's done a superb job at looking after the landfill and building grounds. I mean, his engineer degree has helped us immensely, and he looks after the public services department too, so he does a great job. Ms. Ragsdale, thank you so much, because it was a great task to undertake to bring us forward and get our policies and codes in line from that standpoint. You're a young star with a great future. Just always remember that. And she's always there when you call, or she'll get right back to you. So citizens, take advantage of that, because she's a wealth of knowledge in those areas. Bud, Scott Bud, thank you, buddy. You do a good job with your department. They run our meetings from a technical standpoint, and Lord, we've been through a lot with changing over from rooms and everything else, and we appreciate your service and your team's efforts to keep us going and straight. Ms. Kim Vanderhyde, man, I'll take you any time in the trenches of working with budgets and numbers. You know, whether you're wearing your sweater or not, it has been a pleasure, I mean, a true pleasure to work with you. Mr. Hunt, I don't know that in my eight years, and throughout my lifetime, that I've had anybody that I've seen grow like you've grown in the last eight years. You showed great leadership, and I appreciate you and Kim both for really stepping up when you had to do the, wear two hats and everything, and you can tell that you're passionate and love the county, and you do a great job for us, and it has, it's truly been a pleasure working with you. You know, I know that I'm just leaving this seat, I'm not leaving the country. So I'm certainly hope we can get together from time to time with, with, with Kim and Baden, and just go have a casual lunch where we don't have to talk about business. But it's been a pleasure. I've had the pleasure of working with a great number of community leaders, but there's a couple that stand out, and that's Mr. Fred Webb of JT Mini-Mall. I don't think I've ever called on Fred and asked him for anything, or asked him to look at a project the county was involved in, that, one, he didn't take it on, or, two, he didn't go to work to help me find somebody for our team that would help. Carl Starber taught me a lot from the Danville Regional Foundation, and his heir apparent, Clark Costile, just stepped right into the position and has done an outstanding job, and they've been such a blessing to Pennsylvania County and this community. Most folks would be amazed if you looked back and saw how much contributions they've made to this county. When you just look at the parks alone, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars have been saved because they were willing to be a partner to develop Wayside Park and all the middle school parks, to increase the quality of life for Pennsylvania County citizens. So I wanna thank them. I wanna thank the business community, because we had a lot of business leaders that stepped up and got involved in, in assisting the county and working to move the county forward. I think of, I remember getting a call from Morgan Olson, and they wanted to give a vehicle to Public Safety. And it wasn't anything that anybody did from any agency, or really from the county, other than do what we should do, which is be nice and cooperative with folks. And they wanted to present the county with that vehicle, because they appreciated the fact that when they asked, when they got the building out there, if we could change the little roadway right there in front of their building to Morgan Olson Way. Well, that was a simple request to bring back to you colleagues, to say, we, we wanna do that, and, and then they were so impressed with the cooperative effort between Danville and Pennsylvania County. So keeping those relationships going can be very valuable, and that's, that's how that one little item came about. So a lot of little things play into impact getting assistance from your business leaders. So it's really important for all of you to stay connected to those business leaders, because they can help you in a lot of ways. But they not gonna help you if they don't know and you don't ask. So continue to ask, continue to ask. And I do wanna follow up with thanking Danville City Council. I've had a, a good relationship with those folks, in particular Mayor Jones and Ken Larkin. They are really good people. I had the pleasure of serving on RIFL for six years, along with my colleague Ron Scares, and there was, if you go back and look, there was tremendous economic development that occurred during that timeframe. But again, it wasn't me, it wasn't Ron, it was a team effort between Pennsylvania County and City Council, working together for the common good of the region. And that's what it's all about. All the bickering and fussing and all that stuff really just doesn't matter. It only slows you down, it holds you up. So keep that in mind and try to strive to keep that relationship, because we were told in December of two thousand twenty-one, at the Institute, in a meeting, that Pennsylvania County had become the envy of the state, because folks wanted to emulate what Pennsylvania County was doing, because there'd been so much done in that span of time. And it, it all comes back to what I said before, working together for the greater good, not about me, thee, I, it was about everyone. So that would be the message I leave you. I wanna thank my family. Your unwavering support for the last eight years is priceless. I'll also apologize to you for what you've had to put up with and deal with at times. I love you all, and I'm sorry that that happened. I wanna thank my Lord and Savior for giving me the opportunity to serve, and I do hope I pleased the citizens with my service, but most of all, I hope I pleased my Lord and I will be praying for you gentlemen that will be serving in the future. I promise you that. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I say Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
That was good. I didn't, I don't have nobody else to thank. You don't thank them all, but that was good. No, I'd like to thank everyone for being, coming out tonight, and again, thank all our staff, I mean, everybody. We, us, a lot of staff members don't come to these meetings, and they don't see us, but everybody in the county. That's the reason we're here, for the good job that they do every day. I wanna wish the very best to all the board members that's leaving. The very best for them, their families, good health, and they enjoy their self, won't have to sit up here and maybe have a bad night and stay at home, they look at us on the TV.
Watching us have a bad night.
Right. Oh, thank them. I wanna welcome our new board members coming on, come January, we're gonna have some new members. Oh, I think we've had a great year, and I wanna thank the board here for supporting me as the chairman for the past twelve months. I mean, I think that we've worked good together, and I appreciate that. I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Be safe, and just remember the reason for the season. And again, thanks to everyone. And with that, Mr. Torrell, do you have anything, sir?
Real briefly, I do wanna thank all of you, board, you continuing and leaving for the opportunity to work and learn, and learn from each of you. So I also wanna thank Mr. Arnold for continuing to drive the jail project and the reassessment project, there's a lot of work involved with that. I do wanna reiterate the contributions of Ms. Vanderhyde. You know, a clean audit takes tremendous, is built on a pyramid of a tremendous amount of work, and I watch her every day really carry a lot of weight to make that happen. Thank you. Finally, there's a prayer breakfast, January tenth. I think we can all agree how important that is to the health of this community and this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torrell. Mr. Hunt, you have any comments, sir?
Uh, yes, very briefly. I, I wanna thank the board for their continued support of me. I've been here thirteen years, and I've grown a lot, and I couldn't do it without you, so thank you for your continued support. I also wanna say thank you to the three members that are leaving. I've spoken to you privately, but you should feel very good about your service. I'm often reminded of Roosevelt's famous poem about the man in the arena. Y'all were in the arena for, some people, a brief amount of time, but others for eight years, and you should be commended. I thank you for all your service, you will be missed, and just wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe and Happy New Year. Thanks.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. No more business.
Slam it down.
Meetings adjourned. Thank you.